Portland budget hearing. My name is David Behringer, and I am the Chair of the Tax Supervision and Conservation Commission, and I welcome you all to our hearing this morning. I will now ask my fellow commissioners and the staff to introduce themselves and to state if they have any business relationships with the district that could be perceived as a conflict of interest.
Good morning. I'm James Offsink, Vice Chair of the TSCC. This is my fifth year as a commissioner, so I'm getting to talk to you all, and I'm looking forward to the conversation this morning, especially given what I imagine what a departure it'll be from our previous conversations. When I'm not with TSCC, I work at OHSU, and I don't have any business relationships with the district that would be a conflict of interest.
Good morning. I'm Margot Norton. I'm also five years with the commission. I am retired in my former life, I was in the Finance Office, which worked for MacRae. I live in New York, fourteen and a half minutes by some streets to the airport, and last month of my career.
Good morning. My name is Mark Wobold. This is my fourth year with the TSCC. I'm off video here, but still have my voice. And I have no conflicts of interest with the port. Like Margot, I live in the Northeast, and I've started hearing those small planes coming over the my house, so I guess we must be getting close to summer. My day job, I'm a senior policy analyst in the President's Office of Portland State University.
Hi, everyone. My name is Harmony Kiderov. This is my first year as a member of PSCC. It's so nice to meet all of you. In my former life, I was an educator. I taught middle school math and science. I currently work in curriculum and assessment development for a major publisher. I have no perceived conflicts with the district. I do, however, have two small children, three ages three and six, so they are likely going to be making noise in the background. I apologize in advance. I'll stay on mute for the rest of the time.
Hello. My name is Craig Gibbons, and I'm staffed to the commission.
Good morning. I'm Tony Betchart, staff.
Thank you. With the district representatives, please introduce themselves now.
I'll start. I'm Curtis Robinhold. I'm Executive Director of the Port of Portland. Dan Blafus, you want to go next?
Yes, Dan Blafus, Interim Chief Financial Officer and General Counsel with the port. Been with the port about six and a half years.
Good morning. Dan Pipinger, I'm the Chief Operating Officer of the port.
Kristin Leonard, Chief Public Affairs Officer with the port.
Good morning. Vince Granato, Chief Projects Officer with the port.
Stan Waters, Chief Project Delivery and Safety Officer for the port.
Bobby Stedman, Chief Administrative and Equity Officer.
And we have President Alice Cooper Comas is on the phone.
Great. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. So on behalf of the commission, I would like to express our appreciation for how your organization has stepped up to operate and meet the current public health during the public health crisis within the scope of your own mission. I mean, everyone's doing their part. We really appreciate that. We understand that forecasting the budget for next year is a challenge right now. Managing your organization will require extra effort as the year unfolds. With that in mind, the focus of our questions during the hearing this morning may be somewhat different than we've done in the past. For the public for whom the TSC commissioners represent, this is an opportunity to hear directly from the accountable officials about how you will manage through this uncertainty. If you have a brief introductory remark on your budget, we would like to hear them in just a second, and then we will ask our questions and discuss the budget with you. Following discussion, we will take any testimony from the public. Right? We'll have a process for that, for the public. With that, I'll turn it over to Executive Director, Mr. Robinhold.
Terrific. Thank you, Chairman Behringer and TSCC Commissioners. Nice to see everyone again, even if it's in a somewhat strange and changed fashion here. I'm going to provide some introductory remarks, and then our Commission President, Alice Cooper Comas will have some comments, and then we'll get into any questions you have for us. We once again appreciate the opportunity to discuss our fiscal 2021 budget with you and answer questions. It is a wild time. As you noted, development of the fiscal 21 budget has been a challenge for us, like all jurisdictions. Here at the port, we prepared two budgets. At the beginning of March, we had completed our annual budget. Then, two weeks later, the world changed. In the course of a matter of three weeks, our finance team led the development of a revised budget in light of the COVID-19 impacts, particularly on our aviation division. As a result, our process this year was somewhat altered. In order to present a meaningful budget to our commission and to the TSCC for your review, we delayed our first public hearing until May, and this would have normally occurred in April. This delay provided us the time needed to assess COVID impacts and develop a budget focused on resilience amidst this wildness and uncertainty. We remain committed to our mission of moving people and goods and creating economic opportunities in the region. Our strategic plan and core values are the foundation of our fiscal year 21 budget and how we judiciously manage our resources. As a result of the COVID crisis, our guiding principles in developing our budget this year included two primary areas. First, financial stability, preserving the financial stability and viability of the port as an organization, and secondarily, preserve operational activities, maintain resources, activities, and strategic services to ensure we're positioned to help lead the regional economic recovery. Right now, one of the most significant challenges ahead of us is this uncertainty. Questions remain about the severity of the pandemic, what recovery looks like, what shape it takes, an L or a U, or a sine wave, or a Nike swoosh, or what is it, a square root sign, and whether there'll be recurrences, to what extent aviation is impacted by those changes. We're thinking about all of those questions. So I'll start with a brief overview of PDX and our general fund, and a bit on general outlook, and then, as noted, our Commission President is also here on the line to share a few comments. For PDX, you'll see in our budget, we're expecting a slow recovery. Our annual passenger forecast is expected to be approximately 10 million, which is about half of what we originally anticipated and what we had last year. Drawing from industry experts, we're hopeful that by the fourth quarter of fiscal year 21, passenger traffic is back to, say, 75% of where it would normally be. As you know, passenger levels directly influence many revenue sources for the port, including parking, rental car operations, ground transportation, and terminal concessions. Currently, we're experiencing revenue declines between 85 and 95% over a year ago across all of these businesses. In response to the COVID-19 pandemic, we've implemented several temporary measures intended to mitigate financial impacts, including a partial hiring freeze, elimination of non-critical travel, limited overtime, an employee unpaid furlough program, elimination of annual merit compensation for administrative employees, and we've reduced other areas of operational and maintenance spending. Our fiscal year 21 budget reflects more than $21 million in reduced operating expenses and more than $114.5 million in deferred capital projects. These measures are needed to preserve cash and maintain adequate cash flow to pay operating and debt service expenses. As you all remember, we very specifically delineate the general fund side of our business from PDX. And on the general fund side, we've been fortunate that those operations have not seen the same degree of impact as the airports. Fiscal year 20 brought the return of weekly container service to Terminal 6 with the start of the Seoul, South Korea-based carrier SM line in January. We expect this container service to continue into fiscal year 21, along with our BNSF intermodal rail service to the Puget Sound region. We have a diverse mix of marine tenants and business lines, and we're fortunate that many of these revenues are fixed land leases or minimum annual guarantees, which provides some protection during an economic downturn. Our industrial division is focused on ensuring our properties are customer-ready to help continue to attract businesses that create quality jobs for the region when that demand returns. Work also continues in fiscal 21 to address our Portland Harbor Superfund obligations, which we've talked about in years past, with costs for cleanup, planning, and design budgeted for Terminal 4 and Willamette Cove. Briefly looking ahead, based on conservative fiscal policies for many years, the port is positioned to weather these difficult times. The judicious allocation of resources in the fiscal year 21 budget will allow the port to meet our short-term goals while continuing to serve as the region's gateway to the world for products and for people. We look forward to helping the region recover economically and continue creating economic opportunities for the region. Before I turn it back to you and your commissioners for the budget discussion and questions, our Commission President, Alice Cooper Comas, is here to say a few words on the phone. Alice?
Thank you, Curtis. Yes, thank you, Curtis. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and TSCC Commissioners. On behalf of the Port Commission, I'd like to express my sincere appreciation to Curtis, the executive team, and port staff for the exemplary leadership they provided over the past several months as our region, nation, and world work to address this COVID-19 pandemic. These are truly unprecedented times, and we must all work together to navigate the many uncertainties the pandemic presents. We, as commissioners, support the proactive measures Curtis and his leadership team have put in place to reduce costs in response to the significant decline in airline passenger traffic and associated revenues. We also support and appreciate the purposeful approach by which significant impacts on our tenants and customers are being managed. We know there's a long road ahead and more work to be done. However, as the Port's Commission, we are confident in the resilience of our organization and our leadership team, and that we'll emerge a stronger, more adaptable organization as a result of these challenging times. On behalf of the Port Commission, we appreciate the TSCC working with the port to delay the first budget public hearing until May, so that a fiscal year 2021 budget could be prepared incorporating to the best of our abilities the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic. With that, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for those comments. With that, we will start our questions then, and I have the first one. As the current fiscal year will be ending in a couple of weeks on June 30th, is the district expecting any year-end budgetary problems arising from revenue shortfalls or unanticipated expenditures due to the COVID-19 situation after you put together your current estimates? And then what impact will this have on the district's ending fund balance that are not yet reflected in the upcoming budget?
Dan, I think you're still on mute, and if I could ask port staff, when you begin speaking, if you'd introduce yourself so that folks who are not on video will know who's speaking.
Right. Thanks, Curtis. This is Dan Blafus, Interim Chief Financial Officer, and I would just note that various people will answer these questions, the people closest to the requested information, as it's not all strictly financial information this year. The short answer to the first question is that we're not expecting any year-end budgetary problems, per se, arising from the shortfalls. However, we are needing, in the short term, to tap into reserves to meet cash flow requirements, primarily because of the payment plans we've extended to some of our business partners to help ease them through this difficult time. For FY '20, our aviation revenues are expected to be down about 20% to 25% for the rest of this fiscal year, which is about $45 to $50 million as compared to the adopted budget for FY '20. And in FY '21, we expect that to be even larger, about $90 million versus what we had anticipated when we built that first pre-COVID budget. So these basically touch all the revenues at the airport, from parking to rental cars to ground transportation, terminal concessions, the passenger facility charge, which is the $4.50 that's charged for an plane passenger to take a flight, that's used for terminal construction capital, and the customer facility charge, which is what we charge in connection with rental car rentals, and that helps build the rental car capacity at the airport. As Curtis mentioned, we've implemented a number of cost-cutting measures that will help us to the tune of about 20% of our losses. In addition to that, the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, better known as CARES, we were allocated $72.5 million in sort of unrestricted funds to help us manage through this difficult financial time. You see, that $72.5 million is roughly half of our projected loss revenues over the 15-month period or 16-month period from March 2020 through July 2021. Our approved budget reflects the forecast for FY '21 as well as the FY '20 year-end projection, which of course includes lower revenues, it implements the cost reduction measures, and it allocates some of the CARES resources. With all that said, we believe our fund balances reflect our best estimate of the impact of COVID. I would just note that, you know, when we did this budget in connection with the changes required by COVID, we now, in the last couple of weeks, have had the protests and whatnot in response to the social unrest. We're not quite sure how to bake that in yet in terms of the large crowds getting together. Does that make it more likely that some kind of resurgence of the pandemic could occur? So again, we're just going to be, you're going to hear this a lot today, we're monitoring on a daily basis what's going on in the community and with our business.
Great, thank you. And you're kind of lucky, some people have very tight restrictions on that CARES money, and it sounds like you have very few restrictions, so you're kind of lucky in that regard.
Before we move on, Chair Behringer, can I ask a question? Director Blafus, just, sorry, and how do you pronounce your last name?
Perfectly. You did it just right.
Thanks. Just trying to keep the numbers straight in my head. So from the projected losses, you said that 20% was going to be accounted for with the cost-saving measures, 50% roughly from the CARES Act, and then, did I miss, where's kind of the other 30% coming from?
Yeah, that would be, it would result in less net income for the port. You know, we're projecting 50% of the passenger growth for this next fiscal year, and we go from about $100 million in operating income to about 18.
Thank you.
I've got the next question. This is Mark Wobold with the TSCC. So we've talked about the current year and how you're going to manage that. We'd also like to talk about the upcoming fiscal year 2021 budget year. So should the economy remain stalled? It's starting to pick up, but it's still pretty slow. Where are the district's greatest vulnerabilities? And how will the district monitor and respond in a timely fashion if revenue collections go off track or if unanticipated service requirements continue?
Right. And we have a very clear answer to that when it comes to the airport. As Curtis described, the general fund is, at present, pretty solid. But with the airport, everything is driven by passengers in the terminal. If there's no passengers in the terminal, they don't rent cars, they don't spend money on concessions, they don't need ground transportation, et cetera. So the vulnerability we have is if the passenger growth doesn't return, or passengers don't return. And again, that could be just a, as Curtis described, the different models, it could just be we trickle along down at 85% down for longer than we anticipate, or there's some recovery followed by a resurgence, which then drives people out of the terminal again. And any of those situations where we don't get some reasonable return of passengers results in a pretty dire situation, which we'll need to react to. We are monitoring actual results every day, and if there's a material difference between what we have budgeted or anticipating and what actually occurs, we will need to make additional cost reductions to respond to that. I would also say that this is assuming, you know, in these more dire situations, this would assume that there's no additional federal aid that comes in like a CARES Act, which of course, there are conversations ongoing. But assuming there's no federal response, we would need to implement additional cost-cutting measures. Again, we get daily counts, our finger is on the pulse of what's happening in the terminal, what's happening with our various partners, and we'll continue to manage, you know, in a way that is responsive to what actually happens on the ground. I would just note that, as Curtis said, you know, we're a little bit encouraged today by a slow trickle of return of passengers to the airport. At one point, we were anticipating being down 95% through June, and we're at about 85%, 84%, 85% now in June. So it's a little bit more encouraging than we had thought, but again, we're monitoring it day by day.
Thank you.
Just a follow-up. How often do you share that daily results with your commission? Weekly, monthly?
Kristin, I'm wondering if they have access to the daily dashboard or...
I think Chair Behringer means with your governing board, right? Not with us.
Your governing board, right, yes. Not with us, no, I'm sorry, with, yeah, with your governing board, yes.
We don't send out, sorry, this is Kristin Leonard. We do not send out our daily dashboard of updates to commissioners. What we do is try to make sure we have these business updates at our monthly commission meetings.
Okay. Thank you.
This is Margot Norton, TSCC Commissioner. The first two questions and the question I'm about to ask are questions that we are asking all of our districts for whom we hold hearings. But in looking at the questions, mine particularly, again, points out the uniqueness of the port as one of our districts. So my question has to do with debt service and debt service coverage. I know that the airport has agreements, the port has agreements with its airports to guarantee the debt service that's in the airport-owned debt service fund and the coverage at 30%. And we've learned that CARES money could be available for debt service should it become necessary. Now, you've got a whole chunk of revenue bonds, and we also know that we've always been pleased with its bond rating, and that the bond rating has been confirmed, that it possibly could move to watch list, not stable to negative. So I think it's a...
Commissioner Norton, you're cutting out, I'm pretty sure, at least for me, and it looks like maybe some other people are having a hard time hearing you too.
Margot, are you on a phone or on your computer? It might be the audio sometimes is better via a phone, because then that doesn't require the bandwidth.
Got it. Got it. Yeah, that was my question. So my question is debt service, any issues there, not just for the coming year, but in the future? You're potentially new to construction.
Sorry. You're totally gone for me, but I think that we, you know, question around, is around debt service, and I think that Margot was trying to also draw attention specifically to, you know, the revenue-backed debt service.
Right, right. So again, if there's a follow-up, please follow up, but, you know, at this point, our debt service revenue streams are sufficient to meet the coverage requirements. We are watching these very closely. We're trying to conserve cash, preserve liquidity through cost reductions, and you heard about the deferral of capital as well. As I mentioned, the CARES dollars will help coverage expenses, including debt service, that would have normally been covered through lost revenues. This is part of the benefit of this flexible use of the CARES money. We can't use reserves to bolster debt service coverage, but we can pour CARES dollars into buckets as we need to, to make sure that we have the coverage as required. But we don't see a lot of risk in that regard across our credits. You know, as a result of pretty conservative fiscal policies and management, we do have cash reserves to ultimately back up our debt service requirements. We're not, we don't have any concerns about default. In addition, we have, there are specific debt service reserves with each of our credits. And finally, we have a pretty large access to, through our, for liquidity through a commercial paper program, roughly 220, 230 million.
Plus 1-503-593-5079 is now joining.
So at least for the foreseeable, you know, term, we have several backstops to make sure that we're certainly not in any risk of defaulting on any of our credits. The specific coverage ratios, again, we can shore up with the CARES money, at least over FY '21.
Margot, did you join us via the phone?
Yeah, this is Margot. Am I back in?
Much better. You're better, much better, yes.
Much better. All right. So since I missed a portion of the answer, if I could expand the question, we know that you have your guarantees with the airport, with the air carriers and the coverage, and we learned that your CARES money is more flexible. My question is, what happens if one of your air carriers leaves the airport? Are they committed to the debt? And then, secondly, with your ongoing construction, which you're hopefully using in a way to preserve jobs, do you anticipate any problems acquiring or selling your new debt?
So with respect to the first part of the question, maybe I'll kick the second one to Vince. With respect to the first question, we, if an air carrier leaves the terminal, then proportionately, the other air carriers at the terminal pick up responsibility for that air carrier's portion of the requirement at the airport, which is the requirement to operate the terminal and the airfield. So it would, we would need to have several air carriers leave for us to, you know, be in a real dire situation. Air carriers, I think, are, you know, needing, they need passengers as badly as we do, of course, but they are paying us the rents that they owe us, and we think, you know, they've got the wherewithal to manage through this, at least the larger carriers. Vince, maybe on the second half?
Sorry, this is Vince Granato, and I would just clarify that a little bit, too, because these folks have signed leases, and so they're obligated to pay for their space, whether they're here or not, through the term of the lease. So that, they would have to declare bankruptcy for that happen, so if they just choose not to operate it, PDX are still obligated to pay for the space.
And just to clarify on that, how long, or when are the leases, are those typically 10-year leases? Are there any of them that are coming up soon, or are they all kind of on the further horizon?
Yeah, our current lease has been extended out to 2030.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, so they're on the hook for all of that. And I'm sorry, I missed the second half of the question.
The question is about acquiring new debt or selling your new bonds in the next couple of years, since airport bonds generally have been downgraded by the rating agencies.
So the bonds have been put on a, the airport industry's been more on a negative watch rather than a downgrade, so I don't think there's been any formal rating action on a specific airport that's been downgraded. So it's been on a negative watch. It's certainly something that we're exploring, and I know Dan and his team are working with all of the rating agencies and certainly our bankers. We are looking towards going out into the market later on this year in order to fund the PDX next program. I'd also acknowledge that we were able to get a refunding done, that Dan and his team was able to do. And in fact, I think we're just about the only airport credit that was able to get a deal done. So they're obviously looking at it very closely. They're following up with us on what our numbers are and what our projections are. I think one of the best... I think one of the benefits for us is that we've got really strong carriers that are the majority of the operation here in Portland. So you look at Alaska, Delta, and Southwest, they have the strongest balance sheet. So that's a big plus for us as we look at debt issuances out in the future.
Great, thank you.
This is Mark Winkle with the TSCC. I have the next question, and it has to do with, you know, kind of a larger question. What is, in your opinion, looking into your crystal ball, what is the future of airline travel? And as a cluster, an economic cluster in and of itself, what is that future going to look like for the auxiliary businesses such as car rentals, et cetera, that rely on it?
Yeah, hi, good morning. Dan Pipinger, Chief Operating Officer. That's a great question, and obviously something we're working very closely with our airline partners on. You know, we're engaged with them very closely, and I think we are able to see their, by conversation with them. They generally will share their booking information several months out in advance. And we also have a TSA forecast, which is based on sold tickets that we see a couple of weeks. We can see a couple of weeks into the future. So while we're seeing the uptick that Curtis mentioned, we're cautious about it. And I think our view and the airlines' view is that there will be continued growth. But until there is a vaccine or a very effective treatment, we won't return to 2019 levels until that's the case. So there's probably a limit on how far we're going to go in the recovery as we do that. What the airlines are doing now to develop confidence in travel, and I'll talk about the airport in just a moment, is they're limiting the load factor on the planes. In other words, they're not filling all the seats on the plane, and they're engaged in different kinds of distancing. Each airline is a little bit different, so I don't want to maybe state exactly how they're doing. But for some snow middle seat, it's how they board the aircraft. It's requiring face coverings on the aircraft as well. And if they see a lot of demand on a route that's pushing a load factor past 50 or 60%, they're instead just adding another flight. So the airline schedules are very dynamic. I'll give you an example. We just had Valeris add service back to Guadalajara twice a week from PDX. And they've already seen in the bookings that they are going to add a third flight after June 20th to keep the aircraft at a certain load factor. So the aircraft airline schedules are very dynamic right now. So as I mentioned, while we have an expectation of a slow recovery and we're working with them as they adjust to this, we're also working on a program at PDX and throughout the port. At PDX, we call it the Return to Travel Program. It's very much focused on cleaning protocols, physical rearrangement of the terminal for physical distancing, different procedures. We have required face coverings in the aircraft, in the airport. And we've also limited access to the main terminal to avoid crowd congregations as well. And those, those are the things we can do to help engage people to have confidence in travel. And we just have to monitor as we go and stay with good partners. As I think Dan mentioned on revenues earlier, all of the revenue streams at the airport are attached to in plane passengers. So we have confidence with additional in plane passengers that we would see additional concessions revenue and rental car activity as well as people return to travel. I think that they're very closely connected. But it doesn't mean that we're through this now. And as we talked before about the trajectory of the virus is really the controlling factor here.
I have a follow up, Mark, sorry.
So you've already, you talked a little bit about your plans, your plans for helping build confidence and encouraging people to to get back on the airplanes. This is an issue that TriMet, of course, is having. You know, they're going to have to figure out how to get folks back on TriMet. You know, the zoo in Metro, we've met with them, and we know that they're also facing similar kinds of getting their audiences to reengage and to get back into their facilities. Since this is a region wide issue and the port is a region wide asset, are you involved in region wide strategic conversations about these, these, the issue of getting people back to traveling, to transporting, to getting out and and about?
Let me.
Dan, you want? It's Curtis, I'm going to insert myself here. It's a really good question. We are involved in those conversations at a state and a regional level. We're working with our tourism partners at Travel Oregon and Travel Portland. We're connected to the Portland Business Alliance and Greater Portland, Inc. to get some of these messages out. So we're trying to coordinate with the community that relies on air travel to develop some action plans on, as Dan referred to it, this return to travel. You know, even in, I think it was yesterday's New York Times is the headline, people are getting in planes. So we're seeing some of that begin. And what we want to do is make sure we're connecting with business travelers as well as leisure travelers to try to make sure they know what we're doing, what to expect when they arrive. And, you know, as a part of a broader regional economic recovery strategy, moving people and moving product is critical. So the short answer is yes, we're tied in at a whole bunch of levels to try to make sure that it's a regional approach and not just show up and see what happens when you get to the airport.
And I I just add, this is my hesitation, was we're also very well plugged into kind of the health side of it as well through the Regional Disaster Preparedness Organization. We sit on the policy committee. So we're very connected with the local jurisdictions and the Oregon Health Authority and Multnomah County Health as well. So all of our approaches are consistent with our partners and with the health guidance in addition to the travel connections and the movement of goods that Curtis talked to. So we see it as a kind of a whole program, and we feel like we're moving at the same cadence and at the same level with our partners.
Thank you.
Great, so I have a follow up question. I've been reading that airlines really can't function with less than like 70% of the seats filled, not 50 or 60%. And then when the federal money runs out in September, that the bottom could fall out. Is that kind of your perception as well?
Well, I'd say that I think that you'll see that airlines will shrink their staff sizes certainly by at the end of September when the CARES money for payroll runs out. I think that's been publicly stated by a number of them. I think a lot of them are in pretty good position to weather this out. I mean, obviously, the length of the recovery is the key here and whether or not we have a complete, you know, drop back down to kind of emergency situations and hospitals and things like that. So we feel that our main carriers, which are Delta, Southwest, and Alaska, are probably in the best financial shape of a lot of the airlines. And they have a lot of cash reserves, and they feel very confident that they're going to weather this. I don't know that they're making money with 50% employments, but it's better than zero and better than 5%. And so I think that from their perspective, they're itching to get back into the market and actually use this as an opportunity to gain market share.
Okay, a very competitive market, yes, thank you.
So I have the next question, and I think that we've already touched on most of it. So I'm going to kind of like also expand it a little bit. So the port, you know, is unique amongst public entities, especially the ones that we deal with in a lot of ways. And one of those is that the infrastructure improvements are not solely the districts, but are done in collaboration with the airlines and funded in large part by the airport user fees. We wondered about the relationship with the airlines during the pandemic and how the capital project planning has been affected. And since I think we've talked about a lot of that, although I would love to hear somebody just kind of resummarize that part. But we're also interested in, you know, given the plans that the port had, and I know that we talked about a lot of those being slowed down. But if there is a risk of overbuilding, and I know, you know, this is another crystal, crystal ball thing of like, we don't know if it's going to be a hockey stick or a Nike swoosh or a Square Root sign or whatever the recovery is going to look like, but just, I don't know, want to be clear that the port's thinking about that.
Sure, Dan Pipinger again. I'll tackle that, and then I'll ask Vince Granato to talk a little bit about the PDX Next program, which is our main capital program. So we have a great relationship with the airlines. We're very transparent. They have the ability to approve capital projects over a million dollars that are in the terminal or airfield environment. And we bring those to them all the time, and we have a very robust capital improvement program and asset management program. The majority of our projects are asset renewal and refurbishment versus new capacity building. And in response to the pandemic and the loss of traffic, we have deferred about $114 million worth of capital. And when I say deferred, I mean that it's been pushed out into the future. We've looked at our assets, we've taken a risk assessment. We share that with the airlines on what projects we're not going to bring forward. And we're very cognizant of what it means not to bring those forward or back. The other piece you talked about was overcapacity, and I'll just, I'll mention it briefly and then ask Vince to talk about the status of those projects. The main project, the Terminal Core Project, which is the large $1.65 billion project. You know, if we were starting, if, well, let me, it's it's more to build out the core passenger processing area of the airport to allow greater flexibility for the way people travel today. Very few people go to a ticket counter today. Automated bag drops coming in the future. Security lines and or health screening is shifting, so you need more room for it. And our existing terminal infrastructure is pinned together in a seismic structural way that doesn't allow us to move the furniture around the room. And so regardless of whether we reach 2019 levels quickly, in the long run, we need that kind of flexibility in the main terminal processing area. It will certainly give us more capacity, but it's not adequate to handle much more than we were already at. So in a lot of ways, you know, we feel pretty good about the capacity we're building now. If we were starting a brand new project to build 10 gates today, we would probably pause that and think, well, we we have time to build that. But the core processing area has to be redone regardless of the passenger volume getting much larger because we were running out of room and the security wait lines were starting, were going to be what what we don't think is adequate for the community. So we are very cognizant of the capacity question. I think we feel very confident on it. But if we were doing more, I think we would probably rethink that a little bit. But I don't think that's the case with our PDX Next Terminal Core Project. Vince, I don't know if you want to add any more to that?
Yeah, this is Vince Granato, and I guess what I would just say is that we really went back to the business case for each of the projects and reevaluated it and just said, hey, does this still make sense for us to do it? And then you also had to weigh it against, well, where are we in the process to? You know, the concourse E extension, you know, we're ready to open it here in about a month. So it doesn't make any sense to, you know, to stop that one. We looked at the parking in the rental car facility. The steel was ready to come. We'd already had it, it was here, ready to come up out of the ground. And so, you know, Dan and the operations team is just going to look about, okay, how do we reutilize our assets? And so on the parking system, right, we have a lot of capacity that we're going to have when that thing opens up in a year and a half. But we'll be able to pull people in from the remote lots and let them use the closer in facilities, which is reuse the infrastructure in a different way. And there are some benefits to that, too. And then like Dan said, here in the in the main terminal area, if anything, this event has shown us that the need for a more flexible facility in here to adapt to a changing travel situation, this is a great project that is going to help us do that. Again, we're a long ways down the road in far, as far as our our design, a lot of the pre work anyway. So we're going to continue to have a conversation with the airlines to see, can we accelerate that project and save some money? Are there some off ramps of some areas that maybe we could slow down if that made sense, too? But I think the fundamental business case still made sense and will make sense going out in the future, even though obviously it'll take a while to get back to the the travel passenger levels that we've had before.
And I just add on to Vince's comment. For example, on the concourse B remodel, we gave the project two gates we wouldn't have normally been able to give them. And that will accelerate and save money for the project as well. And there's in-ground airfield utility work that needs to get done. This is a great time to get it done because when the capacity comes back, it'll be a big operational disruption. So, you know, we're trying to balance that risk out with the advantages of moving quickly in certain areas.
That's great, thank you, really appreciate the answer.
All right, I have the next question, and we're going to switch gears a little bit from the airlines and the airport to the shipping business. So can you tell us what the impact of the rolling shutdowns of global manufacturing and agriculture have been on the port shipping business? Up until March of 2020, the most significant impact on the Northwest agriculture industry was tariffs. How has the pandemic changed that situation? And how is it affecting all the ports bulk shipping businesses?
It's Curtis Robinhold. It's a, it's a really good question. As noted in my introduction, we've actually been pleased that our marine business has run pretty stable in these three or four months. If anything, it's been nice to have a lot of stability in one area that we historically have not had it in. Probably the biggest impact thus far has been on the automobile side. We actually talked about it briefly this morning in our commission meeting. And with the auto business, as you may recall, the port is the largest auto terminal on the West Coast, and that is Vancouver and the Port of Portland together. Both imports and currently exports, Fords bound for Asia. The disruption has been both on the value chain, on feeding that business in, so on the supply side, but also on the demand side because very few people are out buying cars right now. So initially, auto companies needed storage space for vehicles that had been manufactured but were not needed at the dealerships because of those low sales. But increasingly, as manufacturing facilities have shut down, the downstream effect is reduced import and export volumes through the marine facilities. So for fiscal year '21, we're forecasting to be down about 16% compared to fiscal year '20. We're actually fortunate that many of our lease agreements, in particular around, for example, bulk grains, those are land leases and involve minimum annual guarantees. So that lease structure essentially provides us with a buffer against swings in, you know, potential impacts on the, in particular, the bulk side. So some stability, we aren't seeing a lot of impact except for in that auto business, as noted.
Have there been any shifts around the effects of tariffs? Have you noticed anything, or is that affecting the business kind of in the short term, long term?
You know, when there were a lot of, I was just described them as bombs being thrown about a year ago, we saw some really severe short term impacts on things like cherries. So for three or four months, cherries were down 50%, but now they're back up. Most of that is around uncertainty for the shipper. It's not around the tariff itself so much as not knowing what market is going to be available for those shippers. So right now, we're not seeing a lot of that impact. The the impact of tariffs tends to hit most severely for us around the higher value cargoes like crab or cherries or blueberries. And we just haven't seen that in the last, call it, six or eight months. And, you know, hopefully, that has settled down for a while. But honestly, it's one that we're keeping our eye on, especially related to trade with China.
Well, for sure, in terms of COVID, too, and the relationships around that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you, this is Margo Norton. In your opening remarks, Mr. Robinhold, you did mention the super fund and the harbor cleanup. We've been asking our districts that are in partnership with each other on a number of products, projects, whether their participation might be influenced in any way by what's going on. So what about your partnerships in projects like the harbor cleanup, levy ready, things like that?
You bet, I'm going to throw it over to Kristin Leonard to answer for us.
Thank you, and yes, in Curtis's opening,
And yes, in Curtis's opening, the reference to our continued work, I think, is a really important element to talk about how we're thinking about moving forward. So our primary, taking Superfund first, our primary focus in Portland Harbor at this point in time is moving cleanup forward at Terminal Four and Willamette Cove. The port continues to work with the Environmental Protection Agency to complete cleanup at both locations in accordance with their cleanup guidelines and their long-term plan for the river. At these sites, there are only a few responsible parties, and you may have been talking to others as we've moved along, who have really stepped forward to do this work, and we appreciate their partnership. In particular, on one of these two sites, Willamette Cove, we're working with the City of Portland and the State of Oregon. And we continue to really be focused on moving forward and keeping this, this work going through all of these uncertain and unusual times. The preliminary cleanup design efforts for these locations are reflected in our FY21 budget. Specifically, a series of engineering evaluations and analysis documents will be prepared through this next budget cycle. We refer to it as the work needed for remedial design. And we continue to focus on EPA's expectations of protecting both human health and the environment. In addition, we are working with our consultants and the regulatory agencies to ensure that all of this field work is being done safely under the current pandemic circumstances. So that's where we're continuing to focus and move forward as it relates to Superfund. And I don't know if there's any questions about that before I move to Levy Ready Columbia? No? Okay.
No, go right ahead.
Perfect. Levy Ready Columbia, and I want to give a little bit more background to this. We've spent a lot of time over the years talking about Superfund, but there's been some action and some change over the last year, year and a half as it relates to Levy Ready. The port has been a participating partner in the Levy Ready Columbia project since its inception nearly seven years ago. This was an Oregon Solutions project established to address the recertification requirements of the Columbia River Levy System. A significant amount of work by this group culminated during the 2019 Oregon Legislative Session with the passage of Senate Bill 431, which created the Urban Flood Safety and Water Quality District, kind of a mouthful. We maybe should have worked a little bit on our branding there of this special district. This new special...
Kristin, just to let you know, we have had our hearing with that new district just recently, so we have talked with them about it as well.
Oh, terrific. So you have already heard, I wasn't sure where they were in your lineup as it relates to hearings. So I won't go into as much of the background as I planned to, but we do have a seat on this new special district, Levy District. We are continuing to participate and have committed to do so for the next five years as this new special district kind of sets in motion the merger of these, the four districts that were created in the past. So we remain committed to this work, and we are the largest landowner as a, behind the levy in MCDAs. So we see this as really important to the long-term, you know, just the regional asset of transportation facilities and economic lands. So with that, I'll make sure, I'm here to answer any questions.
Great, thank you.
I think I'll finish this up with our final question, which is probably a good opportunity. Is there any final thoughts, too? We know that the fiscal year '21 budget was prepared with information that was up to date as of April, and I think I've heard in your remarks up through into May with your first public hearing, will there be any changes to the budget upon adoption?
This is, this is Dan Blafus again. We don't anticipate huge changes, but they, it will probably be reduced a bit. We've been working to try to reduce costs wherever we can to aid the airline partners that we've talked about a lot. So the additional reductions will be incorporated into the budget we submit to our commission. We think what's there now is our good estimates of the revenues and expenses and non-operating capital projects we expect, but again, I think we're going to be able to reduce it a little bit. Again, we're going to closely monitor it and, and see how the year goes. Commissioner Offsink, I wanted to just follow up. I misspoke earlier on the magnitude of the operating income impact. It's more in the neighborhood of $30 million, not the 80 that I sort of implied. So if you do your math, 150 minus 50 minus 20%, it's more in the neighborhood of 30 million.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. I think, I don't have any follow-up.
Okay. David, I, David, I have a follow-up.
Okay.
And, and my follow-up actually goes back a little, a little bit. I had a second part of a question that I wanted to ask and had to do with the industrial development over the next period of time. You've already told us that with your current tenants, you have a number in rental deferral, and we're interested in how long you think that deferral might last? And then what, what industrial development activity are you going to be able to mount in the near term?
Why don't I take that one? It's Curtis Robinhold. So the industrial sector over the last couple of years, as we've talked about in Portland, has been incredibly robust, strong fundamentals at the close of 2019. And most of what we see now in the coronavirus pandemic in the sector, excuse me, is just substantial uncertainty. So essentially, what we've done, the deferrals that we've instituted have been at the airport and not in our industrial business sort of line of, of work. So we continue to focus on the mission, essentially enhancing the region's quality of life by promoting industrial development. That business, I'd say, is more than anything right now. The development side is on hold until we see how this shakes out. We want to ensure that we're positioned in the long run to leverage our strengths and really help lead on recovery, as I mentioned earlier. So we're thinking a lot about how we use our industrial real estate to support existing port customers, marine and aviation business lines in recovery initiatives, whether that be cargo or movement of goods in other ways. We're also working on developing and marketing existing underutilized assets to generate revenue to essentially further the efforts of financial sustainability. And as I think I mentioned a year ago, we're also thinking increasingly about diversity, equity, inclusion goals for our properties, to think about how we generate quality jobs on our sites, especially for underrepresented groups. So that work will continue. I think what we'll see here in the short term is essentially we're pumping the brakes a little bit on new development to try to see what might be essentially best applied in the sector, but the deferrals that were mentioned earlier are not in our industrial property sites, they're more in our aviation business line. Dan, do you have any, anything to add in that? Okay.
Okay, I just have one last follow-up potentially. In terms of your crystal ball, is there any likelihood that there'll be more federal money coming for you, to you next fiscal year?
You know, we're not optimistic. I just don't see that happening. We haven't seen any great signals in that regard. Obviously, we're, we're open to that possibility, but it, it looks to us like we're going to have to make do with what we have, and honestly, those are the plans we're making, that we're going to find a way through this with our business partners in a way that gets us to the other side. As noted in the introduction, I think Dan Pipinger alluded to as well, we think we're going to come back. It's really about the shape of the curve, and we're just trying to do everything we can to be prudent in the meantime. And we have not heard, we've been in pretty, pretty good, close contact with our delegation. We just don't see anything in the short term that will be coming in terms of direct support for infrastructure, airports, et cetera.
Okay, great, thank you. So that's the end of our formal questions, and thank you for your contributions. They are always so thoughtful, and we really appreciate all that time and effort that went into your preparation. I'll now ask our executive director, Craig, on what to do about comments, public comments. I know we had received one ahead of time, right, Craig? And if you have any more or not now?
I have not seen any. There were several comments that came in during the hearing, but they were actually intended for the City of Portland, and I don't think you...
So we did, we did receive the one in the email, right?
Oh, yes, that's right. We did receive a letter from a firm concerned about some contractual relationships with the airlines, a car rental firm. But we simply responded to that letter, and we will enter it into the record, that is a contractual issue and not a local budget issue. So that was our one contact with the public.
That's great. We, this is Curtis Robinhold. We've heard from them directly, and they've contacted our commission as well, so we're in direct contact with them. Thank you for that feedback.
Okay.
Right, okay. And then with no other public speakers waiting to talk, I will now close the hearing. Thank you all again for participating, and I'll open up a regular meeting of the TSCC and ask if any commissioners have comments on the budget? No? I'll turn it over to the executive director, Craig, for his staff recommendation and review of the port's budget.
Thank you, Chair. Well, it's been quite a, quite a budget year, but we have weathered it, and the budget came through very clear, very organized, everything balanced. We didn't see anything that we recommended you would object, and we did not see anything that we would see that you would make any recommendations. So I recommend that you certify the budget without any objections and without any recommendations.
Great. With that, may I have a motion authorizing the commission to sign the certification letter as recommended by the staff?
Permanently move.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. opposed? The motion carries, and I will adjourn our regular meeting. Thank you all for participating, and have a great afternoon. We are done.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Bye.